I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you, Teresa, please take the roll.
Amy Jones.
Here.
Horn.
Yes.
Keel.
Here.
Bowlin.
Yep.
Behrens.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Jones.
Yes.
All right, any changes or motions on the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second your proposal.
Sorry, I can't get my computer.
You're at the all in favor point.
Yeah, any discussion? If not all in favor, say yes. Any motions or actions on the minutes from the five seven meeting?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from five seven?
Uh, sir. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Jazz.
Yes.
Behrens.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Bowlin.
Yes.
Mattson.
Gee, I gotta get that straight.
You're the one who did it.
I know. No, Teresa did. No, I don't have any to do with stuff.
No.
Yeah.
All right. Bills for payments, any action from the council?
I should approve the bills that submitted for payment.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Bowlin.
Quick question.
Yep.
I know, I tried. You're running the balance due updates, stone at Memorial Park, which stone is that for fifteen or fourteen hundred?
So the new stones that were added to Memorial Park, you know, we added those two branches of service. Basically, we pay half of the deposit before it was put in, and now this is the other half of the.
The remainder, yeah.
The remainder that is just like sixty percent.
We got paid from the legend though.
Oh, the worst.
Which ones were missing?
Water, marine, or coast guard.
Space force. The space force and the coast guard, is that it?
All we had is all the coast guard.
Space force and the coast guard were added to the change.
Yes. Horn.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Behrens.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
All right. Public comment from anybody who is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Resolutions, agreements, hearings, and applications and ordinances? Twenty twenty-four dash seven, application for community access grant. It's in your packet. This is on our Western Avenue project.
We talked about this at the last meeting. This is one grant that we can apply for. It pays up to three hundred thousand. It's an eighty twenty grant. It is due though, July here, so we need to get working on it with CCOG to get it submitted. So this resolution basically says that we're going to apply for the grant. It's going to allow the mayor to sign the paperwork and get that process started.
And that was for six hundred thousand, right?
For mag, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no, no worries. Just making sure that what's written is.
Yep, yeah.
I assume. I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash seven.
Second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Jazz.
Yes.
Behrens.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Bowlin.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
All right, next up, reports Hartford area fire and rescue. Chief Chumacher's report is in your packet. Hearing no discussion. Next up, economic development director Amy Farr.
Thank you. My information's in the packet. The only thing to touch on is the SMGA bus tour. I thought it went really well. We've received some very good feedback on it. So thanks to SMGA for allowing us to participate and showcase Hartford the way they did.
Any questions for Amy?
Uh, for forward of the IDG and HADF board members on request for grading North Oaks Industrial Park. How's that project coming?
Um, the quotes slash bids are due in on Thursday. And then it will go to the board to vote on who will receive it.
Think I got it correct. All right, anything else for Amy? If not, we'll move on to Winn, chamber director. Winn here.
The most favorite chamber director.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Best chamber director.
I agree totally.
The best chamber director you have ever had. I'm going on vacation next week, so I'm gonna. Letting you know. I'm going down to the eighty-five hundred. Um, I'll send pictures. Um, we had a great Discover Hartford week. Um, we did have some discussion about some things we could do better. Bingo was the first time this year. So there were some challenges with that and not as much participation as we wanted, but we are. Um, I feel that it will be good as we, as everyone gets used to being a part of it. The legislative forum was packed, literally, because we got the smallest room at Pizza Ranch. Because I didn't know what to expect, so I was pleasantly surprised with the attendance. But people were sweating their tails off because it was extremely warm. Storybook walk was phenomenal, beautiful day, gorgeous. Um, it was, it was awesome. I loved that. Still working on revamping.
Storywalk, storywalk comment. I don't know who, who should do it, if the library board's gonna do it, but the birds have found those things there.
Oh, I know.
Have you noticed that already, Craig? We had our grandkids down there yesterday. Of course, our five-year-old grandson.
Great, make sure.
He loves smearing that bird poop everywhere, so.
I'll put a part time just on the trail every day and wipe it down.
Make sure before the rigging came in that they were cleaned up, because I was about to do that too.
Okay, fine.
Uh, I'm still working on revamping the Discover Hartford. Just out of curiosity, did any of you have it downloaded or and or use it?
Downloaded.
Haven't downloaded.
I used it for my wheel.
So I, I, yeah. So reworking that, um, I have already created, I, in the packet, it says that I'm working on creating the new member packet and redo packet. And the welcome invite, the welcome invite has actually went out today. I sent twenty-five emails and twenty, mailed twenty-five letters inviting members of the community that are business owners to become members of the chamber. So that could potentially increase our membership significantly if they all join, and why wouldn't they? Is my question. Um, and I have redone the new member packet and the renewal packet. And I have a new member that's going to be on the board that's going to join, so he's going to be my guinea pig. Um, the white glove treatment that we are going to implement as a chamber.
Um, what's the white glove treatment? Is that, is that dealing with like a gold member or is that kind of like a?
White glove treatment is just going above and beyond to show you how important you are to the chamber. I want to do it for new members, but also implement a plan for returning members and just showing them that because somebody had mentioned that wants, that they felt like it's a donation to the chamber, not an investment, and I want that. I would like to see that change to be, you're investing in the community, you're investing in other businesses, you're investing in the chamber. So.
Cool.
Um, and my, I have the team organized for reviewing the bylaws, redoing the bylaws, and putting together a strategic plan for first meeting in June. So I'm excited to get to work on that. That's all I have.
Any questions for Winn? Before she runs off to Indianapolis?
Amy will be covering while I'm up.
I'm happy.
Have you ever been there?
I never have been. My husband's been five times. My son has been twice, so I'm going to be professionals.
I had a chance to. It's, it's quite the event, I would say. And not that I ever get to do anything. I never get to do anything. So, all right, thank you, Winn.
Sir.
Let's move on to the best and most exciting part of the evening. Sorry, but I assume the engineer report's the most exciting.
I understand.
All right.
Who doesn't like?
Definitely the most expensive.
Good evening. As, as mentioned at the last meeting, our plan currently is to meet with P and Z board next week to review those design standard and subdivision ordinance changes. Hopefully get some approval and some direction from them, bring that to you, get that approved at the following meeting or just pending their, pending their comments and changes. Also in front of you is a revised sidewalk map as well as a lighting map and a corresponding cost estimate for the sidewalk improvements. Um, main focus is just that updated sidewalk map for the proposed changes to make for the safe house to school. Um, broke down the, the costs for that by call it router area. Um, so looking at it as a whole aggregate, it was, you know, a large number you add them all up. Um, but really, really trying to identify how we can break that out and, you know, make the grant more appealing to the, to the state and, and get a higher chance of funding, so.
Is that typically an eighty twenty?
Yes. So that updated map with the cost estimates we just got this afternoon, that is in your board, um, your box computer. It's just a separate one. I said on email about it, I didn't get it till today, but.
I know, yeah, I have. Okay, okay.
Yeah. So we'll talk more about that when we get to that, the same item.
Right.
Moving on to project updates on the water resource recovery facility. Um, they're, they're moving along as much as they can with the, with the weather we've been experiencing. Um, but the one big change is they now plan to install that gravity main, uh, Western Nicholson in July. So that's been pushed back a little bit. It sounded like the subcontractor had, had worked elsewhere and then it's coming back later this, later this summer in July for, um, other work in town. So it just worked out better for their schedule. It's not, not a critical item for the overall project. So it adds a little bit of load and empty shift, so no concerns there.
Is that a, is that a twelve, what is that? Is that a twelve inch or?
Eighteen.
Eighteen inch. And the green is four main and the?
The green is.
Super.
Super.
Yeah, so water pipe is blue, kind of makes sense.
Okay.
Uh, sewer pipe is.
All of sewer pipe is green, no matter what, if they're.
Correct. On the highway thirty-eight water main extension, um, plans have been revised and recent with the D A and R. Currently, only thing in their court is the environmental review. Uh, we did find that there was some turnover on the D A and R, on our reviewer specifically. Um, that is explanation for the delay in, in that approval. Um, and without that environmental review being complete, the loan cannot be closed on. So we're holding off on bidding just to make sure that the loan closes and the city has those funds to move that project forward. Additionally, with, with that sewer main pushback, we don't want to install the water main ahead of that since that is showered. Um, because if the water is in first, you have to come back and install the sewer, you're going to be fighting each other. And it's going to be a lot easier coordination if, if the water can come in after the sewer main. So schedule's updated to reflect those changes and may be updated in the future as we receive comments from the state. Last one, Western Avenue, um, actually got word back late last week um, after the report was submitted that the state has completed their review of the construction documents. So we are working to get those updates implemented into the plan as well as some, some changes that Craig has requested too. Um, just for future development, um, ahead of the June fifteenth, so that'll fit in. That is all I have for my report. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Michael?
I have any questions, but I just want to say I like the website for the water resource for the public. To see the, what's the proposed project and the progress. It's pretty, it's my first time seeing it, so.
Quite enjoying it.
With that, uh, Nicholson being delayed, at least the closure of that, how are we gonna, what's the best way for us to let the folks that live on Nicholson and those adjacent neighborhoods know?
So we talked about, you know, when we do close that, I've asked, I assume, give us at least two weeks notice so we can put signage out there, marquee, maybe one way for a week and turn around the, the other way for a week. Um, we've got, you know, our website, our notification system if they've signed up. That's one of the things I can use it for, so we'll sort out.
Sounds good.
Anyway, we can get out there, yeah.
Which one was June?
It was actually, I think the closure was actually supposed to be this, this month.
I know.
So that's been pushed two months.
Yeah, and the main being a June it was supposed to be, so, yeah.
Is that site works, right?
Correct. Yeah, that would help a lot if the rain would hold off for a bit.
Yeah, for sure.
Don't complain about rain. All right, any other questions for Michael? Thank you.
Thank you.
We will go to the public works superintendent, Craig Wayne.
Uh, just a few things different in my report. I guess the update on that lift station pump, the VFD's badened. Um, of course, it's on a date, um, so we're getting quote done where it's going to take to put a new VFD in it. And get that pump running. We just don't dare to. Next year at this time, we probably live by without it, but at this point, we got too much time yet to heat our homes, so. Variable, uh, frequency device, whatever.
Drive, variable frequency drive. You can soft start those more, you can spend on a different RPM.
We could bypass that, but I'm afraid it's going to hammer on that pump and it lines too much, so we're leaving it offline until we get that fixed, so. Uh, the other thing is, um, the April GMRs are done and sent in. Me and Jess are in class today. We will be tomorrow and Thursday with an exam after that and hopefully we could pass it as well. It's, it's like a college chemistry class so far, so it's way off there. Um, and then the batting cage at the sports complex, we have all the stuff here. Uh, we've got the holes drilled yesterday, but then we started working on the playground equipment school to get that out there because they wanted that out in the, actually today, but then with the rain, we had to delay it. Uh, we've got about, oh, probably twenty posts left to pull, and we'll have that all out of there too, so. But, um, we'll see what the end of the week brings. If we get time to get that. The holes are drilled out there, so we'll have to pump them out or whatever, if they have water in them, and then we'll get the posts out there and start putting that up.
You got a spot out there.
Yeah. Yeah, we've already took the side off it and ready for air lines, stuff like that, so.
Okay.
That's all I got. Does anybody have anything for me?
Any questions for Craig?
I know my, uh, the new school addition, is it the elementary school addition here? In fact, I don't know if that's the elementary or the middle school.
Elementary.
I know, and I, it's probably been about a week, but there's a lot, I know we've had complaints before with a lot of gravel from the construction. So do we clean it off or does a G, or does a general contractor?
It's up to the contractor to get that cleaned, and we've been constantly calling them and.
Can we, I mean, at what point do we? You know, they're making this big mess out there. I know if I had a ton of rocks dropped off at my house and, you know, I was doing landscaping, if that just sat out there, I'm sure I'd get some type of fine or something, right? So if, if they're not being responsive, I'd like to.
We can certainly get ahold of them, tell them that.
Get their.
Yeah, get it done, or we'll start addressing fines to it and keep cleaning up after them, so.
Yeah.
Kill them, so.
Okay.
I'll give them a call this week, so.
Do we know what their completion date is or do they?
I think it's actually. I think they're.
It's like they've been working on that for eight months.
Yeah.
They have this winter or.
The shell up so they're done with the heavy equipment.
Yeah, we've had, put cracking rock in there and stuff like that, but they just, it's a mess.
It's a mess.
Every time it rains, it's a mess.
Yeah. All right, anything else for Craig? If not, thank you, Craig. We'll move on to Karen's report, finance officer.
My report is in the packet. I don't really have anything to add. Um, I do have one action item. Our auditors have finished our annual report. A copy of that was included in the packet. So I'll have to get approval on that and then I'll send it on to the state and also have to publish it as well. Her state law.
I know back to the report, the total cash weren't really high. Is that just some of the money flowing through?
Yeah, and the timing of the draws for the wastewater payments.
So I can't spend it.
No, we'll probably have to pick it up.
Darn. We balance.
Tell her she's been here a couple of years now. She's starting to spend. All right, uh, do we have any action on the approval for the annual report?
Make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three annual report.
I'll second. Any discussion? None, we'll vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Bowlin.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Behrens.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
All right. Next up?
Started making work, I can just a couple more.
No, you can mess it up. I should have said that, sure. It kind of came back. Teresa, city administration, what do you got?
Couple things I want to point out. Um, with the highway thirty-eight water main project, um, water loop project. As Michael pointed out, there's a changeover personnel at the state, so it's kind of pushed our review back a little bit. But we're hoping it only be about three to four weeks and we'll still be able to bid it out and still have the project this year. So we're kind of pushing that along. Um, Western Avenue funding, we reviewed some of that last meeting. I'm going to have it on the agenda for next meeting. Um, a couple of things came up for us to look at when we did do that bus tour. The mayor had talked with a, a gentleman from, um, one of the banks in Sioux Falls. We thought he might have some funding. We've kind of vetted through that. They're not going to be able to give us as good an interest rate or go out as many years as we wanted to, similar to the local banks here. So that didn't pan out, but I did talk with Eric Fosheim. Um, you, a lot of his funding goes through USDA and there's the issues that I pointed out before with USDA. It's all their criteria and their timeline and, so that wasn't an option probably. Um, but they have a refund that basically, um, could get you about three hundred thousand at four percent, which is a little under the bond, so if we can get that, that'll be a portion of it that's a little bit cheaper or whatnot. So he actually, just this afternoon, sent me that application to look at, so I'm going to kind of be working through that with him and try to get more information so I can talk to you guys about it the next meeting. So maybe we have a proportion of it, maybe a little bit better financing source, so we might as well pursue whatever we can. So we can talk about it more at the next meeting, but I'll have more information at that time, but we'll look into that. Um, we started, um, the tour of the new plant. We do have that set. I talked with Sherry Leonard uh, for the eighth, June eighteenth at five thirty. So I'll send out calendar invites and remarks. Actually, I think she said she was going to send out a calendar invite. I talked with her today. So we can get that on your guys' calendar. Um, that's for the whole council staff. Um, we're going to invite the P and Z board too, but they've expressed some interest. So, um, we'll see if any of them want to come out or whatnot, so. We'll get that invite out to you guys. Um, other thing with my report, just want to point out, uh, you know, the county is pursuing an RFP for doing a traffic study on Western Avenue, basically from Nicholson Road, you know, north to our city limits. They had three engineering firms submit proposals for that this week. Um, just today, they decided to go with J E O as the engineering firm on that. It's right at that, um, one hundred twenty-five thousand, so the city share will be twelve thousand five hundred right in there for our ten percent share of that study. So, um, they'll have to get a contract and then agreements and stuff, but there'll be more on that. But I just found that out today. I got a call from them. Uh, the updated CIP, Michael just sent that out today. I put that in your box and it reflects what we talked about at the last meeting, the change is in there. So we'll definitely reference that one. Budget time comes around and go from there like we always do. We have, have a leak in the roof at City Hall. We found that out in the, the bathroom. We had a pretty good leak today. Um, the guys got up there and did some patching in the rain or whatnot. I think we're okay, but it looks like the roof's in pretty bad shape from what they saw up there, so we'll have to bring somebody in and maybe assess it and take a look at it. Um, looks like a lot of the membrane that's rubber roof is separating, so more to come on that. We'll have to get that inspected and see if we have to make any improvements there.
How old is the roofing? When was the last time we roughed it?
Well, we did some repairs by.
He's like just repaired about five.
Just some repairs.
We roughed it maybe fifteen years ago, something like that.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's been a while, so we'll get that evaluated and let you know.
It's a metal roof then?
It's a rubber roof.
Okay, I thought you said metal. That's why I was confused, yeah.
No, it's, it's a, like a rubber membrane, okay. Um, the last thing just to update, I got a call from Rocks today. They're the ones that, um, you know, administer our transit system. They are looking at, um, putting, I don't know, new driver or added drivers. They're looking at basically expanding the days of service here in Hartford. Um, you know, really, we're just a couple of days now with a, a trip into Sioux Falls. Um, they're kind of evaluating it, but they think there may be a need to go more days here. Uh, the current driver doesn't really want to expand any more hours, but they have another gal that sounds like that would come in. So, um, they're working through that on their end, trying to come up with a plan, so more to come on that. But hopefully maybe within next month or so, um, possibly maybe get some more service here and some more expanded hours, so I'll keep you updated on that. Any questions?
Any questions for Teresa? All right, thank you. First item under old business is review, approve electrical bid for the concession restroom building at Swenson Park. And the change has been made to award just the electrical base, not the add alternate.
Correct.
You had a discussion with the?
Yeah, so after the conversation with Travis, that's like, I did some research online that just to see what they recommended that and it wasn't even close to what they were talking about, so I would have told them that, that we weren't going to be happy with it. So we're going to take that on there, so.
Okay. So what are you, what are we running to that?
So for now, the add alternate was going to bring power down to our other shop.
Right.
We'll just go without it for now.
Okay.
We have blades to shut or something like that. We can bring a generator down there too if we need to, just for the day we're going to do stuff, so.
Okay.
We can see down the road what it's going to, if the park board has extra money when we get down with the concession. We can always go out and get quotes on it basically and see where we're at too, if we can bring power down there, but if not, we'll just go without it.
All right, we need action to approve that, uh, contract as presented without the add alternate.
Motion to approve electrical bid for concession restroom building at Swenson Sports Complex.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Jazz.
Yes.
Behrens.
Yeah.
Keel.
Hope so.
Horn.
Yes.
Bowlin.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
All right. Uh, next up under old business, review the sidewalk map for the transportation alternative program. So this is the.
So there is a new map, um, that, like I said, just got today that have the cost figures on it that Michael provided. So that is in your computer box as well, so. Um, it's basically the same map that was in the packet, but like I said, has cost estimates for what the project would be. If we go with the proposed project, uh, total cost, they kind of broke it out there with that bike trail along Nicholson South Side. We can either do it in concrete or asphalt. Obviously, concrete's more expensive. If we go with the concrete trail, um, look to me, the total is about one point two million. Um, it is an eighty twenty grant, so that'd be about two hundred forty-two thousand. It is an eighty-twenty grant, so that'd be about two hundred forty-two thousand for the city share. If we go with the asphalt trail, it's about eight hundred and eighty thousand and then be about a hundred seventy-six thousand for the city share. Or twenty percent.
Just about seventy-five thousand difference for us.
Yep, it was about twenty-fourty, yep.
Just for the record, I don't know if we've talked about it, but I did get in touch with the landowner along there and a few of her advisors and it sounds like an easement is very possible.
Okay.
Put that sidewalk in.
That bike trail sidewalk coming from Turtle Creek.
From Turtle Creek up to. Yep.
That'd be awesome. That's.
I think, and we can get an easement, I think, anytime.
Are you talking about Macam Mary and other corner there or?
No.
No, um, it's real stumpy ground.
Oh.
For the bike trail.
For the, yeah.
So can I clarify? Because I know the school.
We should be able to do it in the right way.
Been a while, right?
Okay, I thought I heard immediately we had to have an easement there.
If you put a bike trail there, won't it be right in front of the school? Is that, uh? Does it fit in with their plan?
Further west, technically this is the same routes to school, so it's basically around two to school. And there's a, there's an easement there, a setback for the school.
So we'll have an asphalt bike path in front of the school and everybody's.
We are not proposing to put it on the school's property. When they build, they'll have to put in their own sidewalk system, so we're getting it to the school.
Yeah, where that.
Not within their property.
Right, where that orange line stops.
Yes.
The rest of the way to the west is there, is the school's property, if I understand that correctly.
So just that little gap?
Right.
Yeah, they'll be, they'll put sidewalks there in front of the school.
So this, we've got a lot going on up here, so I apologize if I ask these stupid questions. I'm looking at Cindy's back here. So the, the proper, the price, I do this around there, the one point two versus, uh, nine, eight hundred or whatever. That is specifically for this section or?
That's, that's a total with the concrete bike trail?
Yep.
Or a total with the asphalt?
And that's to do all the red pieces?
Yeah, and that would be all the red.
Out.
So.
And what, go back to the grant piece again? Sorry. So the, the, the grant is an eighty-twenty?
Yes.
So give me the numbers again. One point whatever and.
So with the concrete is.
I gotta catch up to Jay.
About one point two.
Yes.
So our twenty percent would be two hundred forty-two thousand.
Okay.
If I calculated that out right. And then with the asphalt trail, it's eight hundred and eighty thousand, so our twenty percent would be a hundred and seventy-six thousand. If we get awarded the grant.
And going west, that's all concrete?
Yes, on the other side it is all concrete, but to give you the option, I guess, to.
We only have the asphalt on the other side of thirty-eight and then through the park. Is that the parts of the bike trail that are asphalt right now?
The original bike trail is all asphalt, yeah. So through Turtle Creek Park, um, and then by the school on the south side of thirty-eight and then everything on the north side of thirty-eight is asphalt too. Your concrete's gonna hold up a lot better, uh, be there longer. I think it'll match in better with the other stuff, but that's.
Of course, we're gonna do some repairs on the concrete part too. A lot of credit.
Three times.
I guess, so.
I mean, you'll have repairs on the.
I mean, yeah.
That, that original concrete, it was not like the original bike trail in town?
I was gonna say, that's the only concrete one we have, and that was the very first.
That was back to like a Roland Vender one of days, wasn't it?
Yep, yep.
What were you talking about on Mickelson?
Yep, the one that's on Mickelson.
They're touring that now.
This one?
Enough dollars.
Oh, gotcha.
It had a lot of problems the first few times.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've, we've done some repairs, but.
Has there been any conversation with the, I know I brought this up the last meeting or the meeting before and my opinion, the answers always know if you don't ask. But so this is strictly, you know, we're focusing on sidewalks, right? Safe routes to school.
Right now.
Right now.
With this grant, yeah.
You know, this seems like a, a great opportunity for the city and the school to potentially partner up to take care of this. In terms of taking, you know, I'm, I'm just curious if the school would help carry any of that financial burden since we're investing in. I, I'm throwing this out there, so the answers always know if we don't ask.
Yeah, um, they're, they're giving us a letter of support.
Okay, with, with a nice check in there, right?
With no check.
A letter of support, that's great. Have we, I mean, have we had any conversation?
No, but I have not had that conversation because basically we haven't decided if we're gonna move forward at this point, so no, I have not.
But it'd be nice to know that before we said yes. Like if they came back and said, hey, we'll get, we'll, we'll, we'll give fifty thousand dollars. I just don't, I don't.
They can do that.
I don't know if they can either, but why wouldn't we ask?
I, I know for the grant, it is the city's got to commit to twenty percent, otherwise they're gonna, now, if we get reimbursed from whatever source, they're not gonna care, but we do have to commit to.
Yeah, we have to, we have to carry that burden, that financial burden.
Yeah.
I just don't see anything wrong with asking if, if they would be open to supporting this because we're creating safer routes for children to get to their school. And I, may, maybe on a way off basis, I don't see anything wrong with at least asking for it.
You're not off basis. They are, they're all for us doing this, but we have not had the conversation. We asked them if they participate.
Maybe we should.
At the end of the day, it's all taxpayer money.
Exactly.
They get more taxpayer money than we do.
And they get way more.
I don't think they pay for city sidewalks, but if, you can give it a whirl. I, I think we, my opinion is we go for it. I mean, if we got a chance to get eighty-twenty, why wouldn't we?
Right.
Craig, what would you recommend for Mickelson Trail, concrete or asphalt?
I'd recommend the concrete.
Would you approve the, um, the application for the transport, transportation alternative grant with the Nicholson Trail, uh, con, being concrete?
Second, any more discussion?
And this is just to apply for the grant, right?
Correct.
This is just to apply for it to see if we.
Yes, this is just to apply for it. So you know, we gotta send everything in and who knows if we get a warrant or not.
See that extra three million in the cash?
I know, I see that, right?
Quit looking at that.
Sidewalks.
It's a platform.
All right, any other discussion? If not, whoa, whoa. Keel.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up, we move to new business. First up, we have a tax abatement for parcel number eight-three-oh-three-four. It's in your packet as approved.
Make a motion to approve the tax abatement for parcel eight-three-zero-three-four.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Jazz.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Bowen. And Mattson.
Yes.
Uh, next up, review, review, approve request to allocate twenty twenty-four operating budget funds to the Hartford area fire and rescue in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. This is their, this is what we commit every year, correct?
This is their request for operating expense. We do have eighty thousand in budget that we are committed to by an agreement for their loan payment on the building.
Yeah.
And for the life of that loan. And then we did at budget time also commit to putting fifty thousand in equipment replacement fund, um, which will not be paid out until they actually buy a piece of equipment and ask for that reimbursement. So this is, yeah, just their operating budget for this year.
All right, any action on this?
Make a motion to approve the release of the twenty twenty-four budget allocation to the H A F R.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
All right, next up, review, approve county plat for track number two of the Zacharias edition. It's in your packet with all of the supporting documents.
And this is for plat outside of city limits, but it's within our growth area, so we, they are required to come to the city for approval first from the P and Z board and the city council before they go to the county to replat.
And P and Z passed it, right?
Yep, P and Z passed it with the recommendation to approve. ISG has reviewed it. It meets all our standards for plating, so.
Correct county plat for track two, Zacharias.
Do I have to spell? Oh, my God.
Gee, do we have to start keeping track again?
You do want to say.
I need somebody to.
One.
Nobody's from here.
There's two.
Oh, is there another one? Oh, yeah, there's two.
Thanks, gotcha.
All right, still, we had a motion to approve. Sorry.
We do have a motion already?
Yeah, I know.
Motion to approve the county plat for track two of the Zacharias edition.
I'll set it that. Is this right on thirty-eighth there?
No, no, this is by their home, by their.
By the home place.
By their home place.
To be northeast of town.
How far out does our?
It's within.
It kind of varies. It's roughly two to three miles out. It's kind of oddly shaped, but it's, it's in our comp plan. It follows our, if you look at our comp plan in your box.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yep, nope. Good question. All right, any other discussion? If not, will vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
All right, next up is review, approve preliminary plan for the Windsor addition. East of town, motion to approve preliminary plan for Windsor addition.
Second.
Any discussion?
So there's gonna be two commercial lots?
That's what they have planned right now. Yep, kind of in the corner there.
That's on the Colton Road and East Second?
Colton Road and Highway thirty-eight.
And Highway thirty-eight, okay. So is that part of the little sliver that comes down there? I just was curious. Cause there was like two, two blocks in that section, block one and block two, and then there was, um, oh, there's a, um, there's a couple other sections there.
Oh, gotcha.
That's commercial, it's not that one closer to. So phase one is the commercial part.
So, yeah, everything, um, south of Second Street is phase one and north of Second Street is phase two for their plans now.
It looks like there possibly could be three lots in there, cause you got lot one, block, block one, lot one, and block two of one and two.
Right, and three is the.
Detention pond.
Yeah, okay.
So this is approving just kind of the general layout of their streets and their blocks and whatnot. They still, if approved, gotta submit actual construction plans to the engineers to approve. And then from there, you know, they'll still have to actually zone it, plan it, get the infrastructure in, you know, every, these are the two we need before actually building, it's gonna be done.
So the others are that.
This is probably step two in the process of eight.
All right, we have a, we had a motion in the second, I believe. No other discussion? Whoa, whoa. Keel.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
I said, I said, yeah.
Yeah, that's my favorite. You can say yeah once in a while.
No, no. Gotta be very formal.
Yeah, that's right. Everything here is done very formally. Uh, discuss the, uh, discuss the draft ordinance for our sidewalk maintenance. Tom's been putting this together. This is just for discussion purposes tonight.
Keep in mind, this is just the maintenance part.
Yes.
State statute controls if you're gonna require new installation of sidewalks where there are not sidewalks.
Correct.
So this would be the maintenance part of existing sidewalks.
Where people have existing, you know, if we feel they need to repair them, you know, if they're a hazard or a safety concern, this would, yeah, my Tom, just.
So there's pieces of cement buried along the road?
Yes.
At the sidewalk lines?
Yes, where there's vegetation over growing.
Yeah, so that's a, there's a sidewalk off of Oaks.
Yep.
By the daycare that is, I never knew there was a sidewalk there until a year ago.
There's quite a bit that's buried.
There's quite a bit that's buried that we.
Yeah, but so like, this would pretty much say, hey, get that stuff off the sidewalk so we can ride bikes on it.
Yeah, initially there's, there's a sidewalk there. It was at one time. It's, I guess like anything else with your property, it's for you to maintain and keep up. But this puts the, the maintenance on the jointy property owner. When Tom sent the original draft, we talked, I, I let him know that we do have a sidewalk policy in place now where, you know, we go out each year and we do it by wards, you know, it's been our practice probably for the last, I don't know, we just.
Six years.
Yeah, I know we've gone two full rounds and at least, but we will go out by ward and we'll identify things that either have, you know, a, a horizontal crack, a vertical crack, you know, if it's balding, if it's got, you know, broken up pieces. But we have, we set certain criterias for that policy. And then if, you know, there's a defect, you know, meets one of those criterias, we do send the property owners letters, letting them know that, you know, this is a hazard, it is their liability per state law, um, but we don't mandate it as a knock because we don't have an ordinance in place to mandate them to fix it. So, and some have, some haven't.
I haven't. Is the one inch pretty standard, like?
Yeah, I think when we put together that policy, we, I know we, we kind of stole it off of another city. I can't remember which now, but it is pretty standard, that one inch. Um, so Tom kind of took that policy, I sent it to him, and that's where we kind of come up with this criteria. Now the question is, is like you said, which criteria do you think all of them constitute having to?
Well, I'm trying to understand why you have a three-inch hole, but a one-inch.
Cause your, your wheelchair will roll through it.
A three-inch hole?
It's a diameter and a half inch that deep.
Oh.
So it's a, yeah, three-inch.
So three inches wide.
I got excited, sorry.
Must go with my wife.
So just to be clear, so this ordinance that's on here that I'm reading right now is the proposed ordinance, correct? This is the proposed.
It's a draft for you guys to review, to have discussion about, see if there's any changes we would make or whatnot. And if we want to move forward with a proposal, then we'll actually have to do a first reading and a second reading of ordinance. So this, at this point, like I said, is just a draft for your guys' discussion, uh.
I will tell you this, we're gonna have one busy code inspector if we move forward, I mean.
Can we get this on Hartford Avenue and see what Bill Jackson has to say?
So I think we should think about, um, having like a year notice or something before going, uh, or to war.
Yeah, so, so that's all kind of part of this to talk about. So we kind of went criteria, um, I talked to Tom too, you know, what are we gonna do? So say we doing that something and then we say, you know, this defect, you need to fix it. How do we go about implementing that? I, I know like Sioux Falls, they go out and inspect their sidewalks too. Basically, they give the homeowner a letter saying, is your defect, you need to correct it. Um, her, you know, depending on what it is, um, they can do it at their expense or the city will come in though and correct it and then bill them. Or then if they don't pay the bill, then it gets assessed against the property. So I know that's, is it something similar that we want to do? Put it all on the homeowner? I, I mean, yeah, those are things that you all need to think about, how we're gonna implement it if we do pass something like this.
Well, the intent is, my intent anyway, with even starting us down this road, if we're gonna do this, we gotta make sure that we have the mechanism in place to enforce it and make it happen. I don't want to just do it and then not have any way to make it happen. If we're gonna do it, we're gonna jump in all, all the way.
Your current policy is fine, but there's no.
Oh, there's no.
No way to make, yeah.
Please do this, and if they don't, just at least give you some teeth to, to go back in and make the repair and assess the owner if they don't do it.
I would say, I don't know if this, this would be every situation. I had an individual who tripped over a bad piece of sidewalk and I explained to them, and so did Teresa, that their recourse was by state statute to go to the homeowner. Guess what they said? We don't want to do that. So if that's the way most citizens feel, then we have to maybe take it to the next step and say, then we're gonna jump in and try to make sure. So if that's the way most citizens feel, then we have to maybe take it to the next step and say, then we're gonna jump in and try to make sure that this doesn't happen.
Yeah.
That's kinda, really, that's part of what's been driving this from my seat.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we have to go back to some of those core conversations where, you know, we had a lady who was killed a few years ago. Now, that, that's, but this is kind of, you know, but I see the kids on the bikes all the time on the roads. We, we walk all the time, all those things, and I'm, I guess I'm just reminding the people listening, or the people in the public of the importance of this. So I think this is a good place to start then. We need, we need sidewalks and we need sidewalks to, to function as they're supposed to. So I'm, I'm just taking a comment to justify.
Right.
Why we're doing this.
And I would agree with Cindy. Yes, this is something that we're gonna make sure is, is publicized very well. I don't want, I want this to be one of those that maybe we go over and above. So people understand what we're doing. If we fill up the council room, so be it, but I'd rather give everybody a chance to come and speak their piece.
Yes.
Than have them say, oh, you guys threw this on without us knowing what you were doing.
What is the timeframe for correction?
And saying that that's not, they need, Tom said, that's up for discussion.
Right, I mean, typically you'd give them, you know, a few months at least.
Well, you can't get anybody to fix your sidewalk.
Well, I, I know Lennox too, cause I've been reaching out to other cities, see what they have. I know Lennox for sure, um, has a program where they give like, they'll come in and do, but they'll give them like three years to pay the city before it'll actually get assessed if they don't pay it. So they give them a lengthy time that the sidewalk gets fixed by the city, but like I said, they give them three years to pay back the city.
Do they have an option to repair it on their own?
They do, yep. They do have that first option to repair it on their own, but if they want the city to do it, the city comes in and does repair it. I'm pretty sure, it's either Lennox or Sturgis. One, they get three years then to pay the city back. And then the city doesn't get paid, then it gets assessed against.
What, do we need like a full-time person to track all these payments?
I think you have to, we'll have to track it in here, yeah. I, I was just kind of looking through some of each ward, you know, if they're. Were three, some of the, the wards with kind of newer developments that have newer sidewalks in it, get maybe twenty letters in that whole ward. Now, of course, Ward two is kind of the older part of town, it looks like they sent out about fifty letters last year that didn't meet our current policy. So just to give you an idea of, you know, kind of looking at.
Right.
If they choose to repair it themselves, is there a standard? Is there a code?
Yeah, yeah, they gotta be, you know, A, A compliant, and the only two percent slow. And yeah, there are regulations with how sidewalks need to be, so.
So what I would, uh, ask the council is to read this over, think about this. If you wanna reach out to some of your constituents, my own needs to do it, just say, hey, this is what we're proposing. It'd be probably nice to start getting some feedback from the citizens before we. Yeah, this is pretty vague. It's, um, let's see, it says. I'm on, um, six dot zero two zero seven C, failure to repair sidewalk defects and damage prohibited. It says, uh, the timeframe indicated in the written notice. We may wanna be, you know, more specific on that.
Yeah, yeah, and we may have talked about that, but it's your guidance on what we want to do. Yeah, I know, that's, that's the first question that'll come to me. So how long do we give it?
So that's, uh, well, what did you let that guy do?
I would like it very black and white, so with, yes.
I almost like to say that, so you have a whole season. I mean, you can't four hundred be all.
You're right, cause, you know, like a couple of years ago, it got very hard to get concrete or whatnot, get somebody to do jobs, so I mean.
Could we have a, a way where they could communicate back to us, hey, I've received the letter, I'm gonna complete the repairs myself, or I have received the letters, please complete the repairs?
Yeah, I, I think Sioux Falls has, I could get a sample of their letter.
It'd be just nice to get a little.
My daughter got one. Yeah, basically you say what you're gonna do. You let the city know, are you gonna do it yourselves? And then they give you a timeframe.
Right.
And you're gonna.
It's like if you turn this back in, you get a year to complete the deal. You know, after three months, if we receive no communication, we're gonna fix it.
Yep.
Something like that.
Well, for like courage use, maybe we have a period of time that we're fixing sidewalk.
Yeah, you do gotta think the city start coming and doing it. That's gonna take more time.
And it's.
City gotta do it, or we, or we'll have to hire enough.
It can't be the cheap assumption.
We'll have to hire, well, we probably would do a, a happy project, a sidewalk project each year is what I kind of envisioned in my head.
Quotes or bids for different contractors, guarantee a price of such and such.
Correct.
These people will say that they want the city to do it, and then we put that out for yeah quotes or something. It would probably be the best way to do it.
All good things to think about. I think we're, I think we're starting down the, end down the path. Thanks, Tom, and I think, everybody just think about this and do a little talking next, put it back on.
Yeah, I'll put it on next, and I'll get some more information from other cities to see exactly how they run their programs, so we can have discussion again next time around.
All right, thank you, everybody. Uh, last one under new business, review section one point zero two zero five of municipal ordinance four thirty on compensation of governing board. Wow, we haven't talked about this since I first got onto council.
Yep. So this section of ordinance does talk about what, um, governing board gets paid as far as, um, for your services to the city. The mayor and the city, um, council each get a salary, plus you get paid a per meeting, um, stipend two. So that's more or less, just depends on how many meetings you make. Um, we actually Karen reached out for me to the surrounding cities in this area that are comparable population, and, um, that's what's in the packet for you to look at.
So we would have to take our per meeting stipend, so twenty-four times hundred and then add it to the annual.
Did you put in here how, what our averages was, thirty-five hundred?
I, I, yeah, I kind of went back and kind of looked, and yeah, obviously it depends on how many meetings you go to, but yeah, what I put in there is kind of on the average of what the mayor and the council make per year, just for your reference.
We don't have to do it on a per meeting basis too, right?
No, no.
We could just go to a flat salary.
You see some of the personals there, they just do a flat salary and it just, that covers all your duties for the city.
Again, this was discussion only, and I really, you know, I'd like to have you guys think about it, just see, because we have not made a change in since twenty sixteen. It was the first year that Travis and I.
I think it actually enacted in seventeen, but yeah.
From my perspective, and I'll say I'm probably the lowest paid city representative.
Based on meetings.
Because I miss the most meetings. I would say that I actually really support the stipend, um, because it does make me feel a little better when I do have to travel to these meetings, that I'm not paying that extra money for our city, you know what I mean? So I'm, like, like I said, I'm the lowest paid person here probably, and I do support that. And I do also like, personally, I always like, um, earning my money. I wanna, I wanna work on commission, you know, like that kind of person. So I, I really support that, and I think that it's a great idea. But the overall, um, number could be discussed, certainly.
I completely agree. I think the stipend, I mean, it'd be one thing if, um, we had people jumping at the door to get it on city council, but not right now. I mean, we could get somebody in here that just comes three meetings a year and then we're paying them, you know, for.
For nothing.
Yeah. With no option to replace.
Yep.
Yeah, I think the original intent was obviously pay you for all the meetings you attend, because you're attending incoming meetings and taking care of city business, and then that salary amount to cover the extra things you're doing between the meetings, um, sometimes another, the mayor, for example, we have a, a mayor that doesn't participate a whole lot of stuff, but Arden goes to a lot of stuff. He, he probably is underpaid for what he's doing. Travis goes to a lot of.
Don't, yeah, don't go that far. Oh, crap, I did talk to Teresa, you shouldn't have.
The council president, you drop goes to lots, so I mean, yeah.
To Jake's point too, another, another way would be just be more, um, diligent about paying council members for special meetings. And what designates a special meeting.
Right.
And, cause there, there gets to be a lot of, so whether you do that in the front or in the rears.
Yeah.
Um, if it becomes part of the, um, meeting.
Yeah.
Or you approve.
So there was a policy passed a, a few years ago, I think you guys are on here, where if you wanted to be paid for a special meeting, the city council as a whole has to prove it beforehand. Well, um, I, I think that was originally put in place, just cause the question was what, what meetings get paid and what meetings don't get paid. And, um, it is a little cumbersome though, cause sometimes meetings just pop up, and so if, you know, in, in between the two weeks, yeah, in between the two weeks. You may be required to attend a meeting, especially like the mayor, and there's no chance to get that approval, and then, you know, they don't get paid, so.
That's, that's the other point too. How many other people are assigned to boards, like the parking rec board? Cindy's on with the fire department. You do not get paid for that one. You don't get paid for the park board. Yeah, so, so. I don't know if that's something. And maybe we need to look at that. What is the criteria? What do we pay, what do we pay for and what do we not? So.
I'll take a little bit of a different approach here, cause we're having discussion.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I feel content with the way that we're compensated now. I know I'm speaking, you know, I feel content. I feel like this is at least one part of our budget that we can, uh, keep consistent or not, not increase. Um, you know, it's hard to, and once again, I'm not, I, I'm just taking a, a little different approach here. So, you know, the city council's never gonna be able to compensate anyone on here to, um, pay for their hourly rate or whatever at their full-time job, right? So I'm placing, I'm taking a different approach. I feel content with the way things have been, but I'm speaking me for, for me personally, and I think this is at least one, one part of our budget that we can, you know.
Keep, yeah.
Keep, keep consistent. Um, but once again, I'm just taking a different approach. But I know the mayor, for example, you know, there could be a thing, you know, I, I know the mayor is very involved, and there's a lot of time, a lot of resources spent on that. I, I probably don't even work five percent as much as him. So, you know, there could be another discussion on, in terms of what is a mayor doing? Cause I know the mayor does a heck of a lot more than most of the counselors.
But that's not always gonna be the case.
It's not, I was just gonna say that.
That's not always gonna be the case.
I've been through a few meetings.
What does it mean to the next year?
Well, just one more year is the case.
So we don't see until the meeting, so yeah, so this, yeah, this is just a blanket, so just like down to mine as well.
So anyway.
I do think it's interesting that the other smaller towns locally don't have the stipend and they just eat cell.
Yeah, I'm kind of surprised that it was only Lennox two that, that just have a straight salary.
Do they have a attendance policy then? It would seem, it would seem like.
They're elected official, so.
Like you'd have to, once you have to hit so many meetings before they just run up the flagpole. I mean, if you, if you miss every voting period, you're gonna hear about it.
Yeah, but you're, you're still gonna be an elected official now, and you're still gonna get your six thousand dollar a year stipend from, from the state, you know, from the state.
So the other part on, on these cities that are, are listed here, we are bigger than every city on there except for Del Rapids, and we've got more going on than probably a few of them combined, as far as projects that we're working on. Um, eight years ago, when we first got on the Nicholson Road, was the largest project the city has ever seen.
Yep.
What was that, three? Five. Uh, was it five million? Now, what's the? Twenty-six. Twenty-three million. Twenty-three, twenty-five, so. Yeah. Anyway, think about it. We can put it back on the agenda at some point. It's not something that's gonna ha, has to happen overnight, but. That was five, huh? Yeah, five million. They had a mark on there too, and then Ninth Street, is that why they got so many? Well, what was the number when I gave Marcus Black? Twenty, twenty-one million.
Twenty-one million.
Twenty-one million since marketing, since we first got on, yep. And that's not counting much of the ways we're.
I was gonna say.
No, that's important.
That was two years.
Yeah, right, yeah. Anyway. Was there somebody coming from softball or no? Just give us this report.
No, we said, we couldn't make it, so we, by the way, I said I just put the report in there to give you guys an update. And if you have any questions, um, you can reach out to Brad Kramer in contact if number was on the letter, so.
It's nice to see that it feels, I mean, it's nice to get this information.
Fields are getting used and, I mean.
Okay, since we're scheduling, it's a lot of what Jenny does. It's, it's a headache.
I was in here the other day and there was, somebody must have been in, she had her notebook out, they must have been scheduling. Standing with Jenny at her computer, they were, I know that's what they were doing, so.
Once you get kind of past, past the practice season, cause the games are set, but it gets a little better, but kind of this first.
We've seen you have pickleball courts.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
By the way, did you know the city has a portable, I shouldn't tell people, it's cause I use it a lot. Did you remember, checked it out, and it's a pickleball court, we, a net, we put it across our driveway. It's a perfect size for, comes with four paddles and balls, and it's free.
Yep, that was purchased by the park board last year.
Well, they picked it with a fifty dollar deposit.
I said, you have to put a deposit, but then it's free.
There's a deposit.
Yep, it's free.
Well, it's free, but you get your deposit.
It's gonna cost you a brand, cause it gets the deposit. I gave this deposit back last night, so. There's no brand.
Everybody was strange. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so that's everything on the agenda. We have anything for exec? Amy, anything?
Um, yes, just an update, real quick.
I made a motion to move to executive session for economic development.
And personnel. All right.
Can we do legal as well?
Oh, and legal.
We are legal.
Karen and the second.
And we got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. They're here. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.